We formed in early 2005 out of concern about the potential closure and repurposing of elementary schools.
2005.
What was that?
2005.
2005? That's not right at all. Okay, that's not...okay. Thank you. 2025. And we are here because we care about our schools and we want to add to the long-term vitality of our wonderful public school system here in Lakewood. Please stop by our table in the back before you leave and grab...we've got some good postcards and information back there. You're welcome to sign up for our email list, which is really good, frequent updates about the latest news and information. And we will also feel free to stop by the candidates' information table there. Feel free to take some literature or yard sign if you feel so inspired before you go home. We are a volunteer run organization. Nobody gets paid, and we depend on financial support from our community. So if you are able and if you feel so inclined, we welcome your financial support. And it's very easy to do it on our website. We really appreciate financial support as well and career being here. And...hold on, I'm gonna get to my next question. As part of Preserve Lakewood Schools advocacy work, recently endorsed candidates for Lakewood School Board. And we are excited that our endorsed candidates are here tonight, Monica Brua and Katie Sleif-Rustad. So thank you for joining us. The school board consists of five residents who are elected by Lakewood voters, and there will be two seats up for election this November. So we'll be making an important decision about who represents us on our school board this November. Lakewood voters on your ballot will be able to vote for up to two candidates. So that's that. Election date is November 4th, and early voting starts on October 7th, which is very soon. So we encourage you to vote. And for our forum tonight, we invited all four school board candidates. However, the two incumbent candidates, Nora Hatzenberger and Betsy Shaughnessy, they declined to participate tonight and speak with our community. And we left some seats open for them in case they decided to join at the last minute because we would have loved to hear from them. But we were hopeful they would come, but unfortunately they did not. But either way, we're very excited to hear from Monica and Katie tonight and about how their views about the school district and how they approach this important job. And we prepared a list of questions based on our questions input from the community. And our moderator, Kelly Moyer, here, has graciously offered to guide our conversation. And so we'll have...we have our list of questions in which Kelly will guide us through. And each candidate will have two minutes to share their response, up to two minutes. You don't have to talk for two minutes, you don't have to. And so some of us may have already made up our minds about who we want to support, and some people may have been hearing from these candidates or hearing about these issues for the first time. So we really ask that the audience listen respectfully and not cheer or applaud or boo or whatever. We just want to kind of have a good friendly Q and A here so we can be respectful and positive tonight. So now let's hear from our moderator, Kelly.
I'm Kelly Moyer, parent of three, current and one future Ranger. I've lived in Lakewood for nine years, and I'm very passionate about Lakewood, and I love all that our city offers. I'm excited to be here tonight to guide our conversation, and I wanted to thank you all for being here tonight as well. It really shows the civic engagement of our community, and it's great to see. The candidates have prepared opening statements, and then they will each have three minutes to share those, and then move on to the Q and A portion. Candidates, please stick to your allotted time for each answer. We will be showing time so that we can stay on track and be mindful of everyone's time here. Audience members, as Jennifer said, we'll refrain from causing distractions for everyone's benefit. Thank you for being respectful of everyone in the room so that we can have a constructive conversation with our candidates. So let's get started. Mrs. Brua, if you'd like to get started.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you to Preserve Lakewood Schools for hosting this forum. I am Monica Brua, and I'm running for the Lakewood Board of Education. I was born and raised here in Lakewood, graduated from Lakewood High, and now have three children in our elementary schools. My family is living proof of my belief in the quality of Lakewood's public schools and the values they instill. I understand how parents are currently choosing schools, systems, and what some of the attributes may be. I've dedicated much of my life to supporting education, and I've served six years as a trustee to the Lakewood Rangers Education Foundation, helping guide its strategic planning and growth. For over sixteen years, I've been part of the ACE Mentor Program with Cleveland, introducing high school students to careers in architecture, construction, and engineering. I've been a lead mentor to those students and currently in the scholarship chair and board of director. Professionally, I bring twenty-five years in the construction industry, including time with Lakewood-based Regency Construction during the district's major building projects. And today, I work as an education planner with an architect firm that specializes in K-12 education, partnering with districts across Ohio on master planning, community engagement, task force facilitation, all of that keeping students at the very center of every conversation and decision. What I hear from neighbors across the city is clear. People want a school district that is strong, inclusive, safe, and deeply connected to the community. Families...oh, I was saying...cutting pace from me at the front last night. Anyway, so for us, my family, early education decisions came down to convenience, so keeping siblings in the same building and building a strong academic foundation that can carry through the years in elementary. This past Tuesday, I attended the school district's tabletop discussion with one hundred and seventy-five residents, and folks from Healthily Lakewood Foundation had opening remarks about change. How change can be hard, but good things can come out of it. Change is never easy, but it's how we grow. And those remarks are spot on here, a change to the school board and the way that things have been run. If elected, I will focus on uniting our community as we prepare for the operating of May. I'll advocate for a new strategic plan, clear goals for the district leadership, and open communication among stakeholders. When people feel heard and included, trust grows and with it lasting support for our schools. I believe Lakewood Schools should be every family's first choice and a source of pride of our entire community, and together we can continue to build a district that reflects the strengths of our vibrant and diverse city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sleif-Rustad?
I do not have remarks because when I try to read a script, I sound like an absolute lunatic. So I have some points I'm gonna try to touch on. My name is Katie Sleif-Rustad. I was born and raised in Lakewood. I'm a Lakewood High graduate, as are my parents, my in-laws, my husband, our brothers, many aunts, uncles, and cousins, all attended the Lakewood Schools. My family's owned a business in the city for over thirty years, and my mother-in-law taught in schools for thirty-five years. We like to say that our house bleeds purple gold. We bought our home in 2010, intending from the jump. We didn't have any kids, but we knew that we would send our future kids to Lincoln right around the corner. And we were really excited and happy to support the levies and the bond issues to rebuild the schools. So in 2016, we actually took our oldest there when he was just a toddler and went on a tour to see the new school. It was really exciting. I've worked in American Greens for the past twenty years, and I've been in a lot of different positions. I've been in a sales rep position currently. I manage twelve...sales reps are responsible for sixty million dollars in revenue. I've also been a business analyst the whole time I've worked there. So I am a self-professed seller. I love both the raw data. I think it's really important to understand how data can be used to either paint a broad picture and really understand an issue or a problem holistically, or conversely cherry-picked to back up a single point of view. I think that my background in business brings a unique perspective to the board. My current role includes strategic planning, contract negotiations, data analysis, business development, relationship management, people management, and currently need deep and mid-year reviews, so reviewing employees and holding them accountable to goals and goal setting for myself and for my employees. So I think that this is...these are skills that are necessary. I think that it's nice to think that having volunteer work or education experience and good intentions are enough to staff the board, but I think that you really need to have some of these critical skills and have a critical mindset, critical eye on data and problem-solving, and seeing things from an outside perspective, not just kind of in the visual and outside looking or inside looking now. So that's why I'm here, that's why I'm running, and thank you to Preserve Lakewood Schools for putting this on.
Thank you both. Now we'll move on to our Q and A. Just a reminder that you each have two minutes to answer each question. First question, what do you see as the top two to four issues currently facing Lakewood City Schools, and what are your priorities for addressing those issues? Mrs. Sleif-Rustad, you go first.
So I think first of all, there has been a breach of trust between the district and the community, and we need to close the book on this to move on, to move past this as a community. There have been...the perception from the community, when I came to that first community meeting, I expected to hear why we unfortunately needed to lose an elementary school. But I left feeling completely confused. I thought, this is why we're closing elementary school? It didn't make sense. And a friend of mine who's on the task force said, well, maybe go again, there's a lot of data. And I went a second time, and I was just solidified in my position that this makes no sense. And I think a lot of people in the community feel that way. And I think we've been talking about this for a year, and there's a lot of group think going on. And meanwhile, the second issue that's most important right now is the levy. We have not been talking about the levy. It has to happen inevitably, regardless of whether a school remains open. And we've wasted a year, and we've caused this rift, this breach of trust, and we need to get back on track. We need to close this book on the consolidation that's basically been hanging around since 2009, when the board reversed its decision to close Grant, right? Like, we weren't gonna rebuild Grant, but we did. We did. We just need to move on. We have seven schools, let's move forward. I understand that there has been a tactic to reduce the budget by losing positions through attrition through retirement. We're at the end of that. That's been a great tactic. Now we need some strategies. We need new strategies, we need some strategic thinking, and some leadership to come in and to say, we need to think things differently now. Like, we have different problems, we have volatile people in the state and federal government, and...I'm up.
Thank you. Mrs. Brua, you can go first.
All right. So one of the things that I think that we're facing is this division within the city. You know, this is an issue that people are...when I first go to the school board, the block party, they say, okay, you're Monica, like, what do you think about the schools? And I say, what I think? And they go, yes, I agree with you, or no, I don't, or whatever it is. So that's really kind of dividing us when we really should be coming together. You know, I was the cheerleader in high school. I will cheer for everybody, right, to bring the team together. And that's the biggest thing that I would say that we need to work on as we are facing this operating on May. You know, there's a lot of people that are upset about what's going on, and that's one of the things that we need to overcome. And you overcome that with identifying a strategic plan, and then all of our actions that we take as a board comes from that. It is our guiding north. Oh, are we supposed to talk about elementary schools? I don't know. Is it our strategic plan? Are we supposed to do X, Y, Z? So that's part of that. The strategic plan should come first. We have one that's expired now, and so we need to relook at that and visit that. I also think there's this lack of trust built from this transparency. We're not really sure what the board might be voting on motions during the meeting. I've sat in a lot of board meetings, but I don't know what the details are. And it's funny because I have...I go to a lot of board meetings, and I have this copy here, it's eight pages long, from a school district, and they list like all the people's names for the certified contracts. And people...we don't know the dollar amounts, but we know who's gonna be the track coach, and we know what people are getting substitute teachers. And so when you start linking documents, then the people who attend the board meetings can see, oh, okay, they're getting a new track, and this is the donation. And so there's things like that that we can start to learn, to share, that people can start understanding that. I also think we need to make sure that our superintendent and treasurer have goals.
Live here.
Thank you. Two minutes goes by. So you both mentioned transparency. What specific steps would you both take to uphold transparency in board decision-making and in communication with the community? Mrs. Brua, you can go first.
Well, I mentioned that I would say the first organizational meeting in January is when you identify how maybe our board meetings would go, and being very specific, and we're gonna share more information. We're gonna, you know, it was said at a board meeting that people should come, and you learn a lot at the board meetings. You don't learn anything at the board meetings. You really don't. Nothing is discussed. It's all, you know, here's the first reading, did everybody approve? Yes. So anyway, I think that can be done at that first organizational meeting. I also think that, you know, if you went to a community conversation that City Council had, and they had a couple of those this year, I think those are great ways to kind of talk to people. You know, when you're sitting up here in a microphone, you feel like I'm above you guys, you're on a platform. But really, have people come and talk to folks about, you know, what's on your mind? So maybe those are like huddles. I was trying to think of a sports-related thing, you know, we're having the huddle, or a board walk, where you, you know, we have a hike and bike day, you know, let's...a board member's at, you know, Lincoln School, come talk to them, or whatever that may be. So have some administration there as well, so those community conversations. You know, I know attending certain block parties and trying to be accessible, to be open to hearing from folks is another way to be transparent. So that's kind of...those are some of the thoughts that I had.
Thank you. Mrs. Sleif-Rustad?
So I think it starts with a really clearly defined strategic plan. I think that if we have something like an OGSM, which in business, an OGSM stands for Objective Goal Strategy Measures. So what's your objective? What's our guiding North Star? Something like, we are an elite public education institution and the walking district, the model walking district for the nation. That's our objective. And then we have some clearly defined goals. How are we gonna meet that objective? So let's say academic excellence, fiscal responsibility, transparency could fall into that, community engagement, best-in-class recreation department, some things that are gonna help us then set our strategies, right? Because I think the driving factor behind this whole elementary school issue is the desire to continue to cut teacher positions through retirement. Why? Like, what does that roll up into? Why is that your ultimate goal? Like, that shouldn't be driving all of our decisions. Our decisions should be driven by a strategic plan. So you have your objective and your goals, and then strategies and very clearly defined measures that are looked at every single year that tell us objectively whether we are fulfilling all of the strategic objectives of the firm. So I think if we can lay out a plan and the community knows what our intentions are, then everything we do, they can see, is rolling up into this plan. At the same time, I would like the board meetings to be actual meetings. I feel like attending board meetings, and Monica touched on a lot of this, I feel like I'm attending the production of a board meeting. This is what a board meeting pageant, and there's like trot out the kids, what did they do? And then, but the actual meat of the meeting isn't being discussed. It's being voted on, quick, 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 and let's get past that and talk about the kids. I appreciate the kids. I have four of them in my house. The board meetings need to be about school board issues. So that's...thank you.
Moving on. As a school board member, how will you work to balance the district's budget while maintaining high-quality education? Mrs. Sleif-Rustad, you go first.
So back to the consolidation plan. We've been talking about consolidating schools in order to save like a half a percent of eighty million budget. Meanwhile, our rep department loses that same amount of money every year for the past couple of years. So to just be focused on this one way of managing funds is really short-sighted. There have to be...that's just one example. There have to be other ways to manage costs. I understand that teacher positions are the largest part of the budget, but it's not the only part of the budget. I think we also need to start marketing our district. We need to start making sure that our enrollment matches, that we can justify all of our levy asks. I think that the public, until we kind of, the district trotted out this issue, this enrollment issue, no one in this city thought there was a problem with the schools, and everyone understands that cost's increasing, that the price of everything has gone up. So to come back to the public and say, hey, the cost of educating has gone up, the public would have come back and said, you got it, just like we have every levy since like nineteen eighty-nine or whatever, the last one that failed. Instead, we've created this situation where now we're putting our funding in jeopardy. So I think that the focus on this one way of cost-cutting is wrong. I'm a numbers person, would love to look at the financial data, I'm sure there's other things that we could look at. Again, rolling up into a strategic plan.
Thank you. Mrs. Brua?
I remember the school conversation that I went to at Grant, I went to that first one, and the treasurer said it wasn't a cost, it wasn't...the reason wasn't financial-driven. And so, you know, okay, well, give us some other reasons. And so if it's not financial-driven, I'm not sure, not sure what the real answer is. But staying on a strategic goal and having a strategic plan and building off of that, we really help set forth the priorities. So once we have those priorities, then you can spend and do the things that you need to do based on those priorities. But the focus should always be on our students, the academic rigor, the classes, the different ways that we are staying on trends, you know, the career check programs that we're offering, the different skill set that we're giving, so we can't lose sight of that type of academics. You know, in 2013 is when we last passed the bond, and we also learned that our community values things that are a little different than other communities, right? We kept the front facade, the brick facade of Garfield, because it was, you know, original. Isn't that great? But we spent six figures to do that when you could have just put other bricks up and made it look like that and keep limestone pieces like we did for Harding. So, but we do things differently. We're Lakewood. We want our neighborhood schools, and we want to, you know, have folks walk to the schools, and so it needs to be balanced. So looking at our strategic plan is gonna guide us to what those priorities are, and being transparent and bringing in the community is another way to get the input that way.
Thank you. What does educational equity mean to you, and how would you use it to advance opportunities for all of our students, including LGBTQIA+ students and students with disabilities? Mrs. Brua, you can start.
So, you know, educational equity is not just...it's really giving everybody what they need. So everybody comes from different places, and they have different needs, and somebody might need longer time or certain...there's a barrier after somebody, so just bring all those barriers down. And so really, it's understanding the individual person and individualized learning. So I think that's important, and I think we do a great job of that. I think that we are welcoming, community, and inclusive, and, you know, trying to always understand, like, you know, who benefits from this decision, and how do we close that gap, and whom might be left out if we do X, Y, Z. So always having that in the back of your mind. You know, I have three children, each, I have two IEPs, one in a 504. I know how hard it is to fight for that, to fight for those students, to get them the services they need, and we continue, still fight it to this day. And we're seeing some benefit and result, in a good way. So I think that that's certainly an important piece for families to know, that I've been there, you know, I get you, and I want to make sure that everybody, you know, can get the education that's gonna give them what they need, whether that's college, or the military, or trades. So that's, I think, that's what it means.
Thank you. Mrs. Sleif-Rustad?
Sure.
What does educational equity mean to you, and how would you use it to advance opportunities for all of our students, including LGBTQIA+ students and students with disabilities?
Right. So like Monica said, making educational opportunities possible for everyone where they're at, right? Not equal, but not the same, but equal. And so we do a great job of that, I think, with CHAMPs, with the STARS and the GIFTed Program. And I've been hearing from multiple parents that we have work to do with some of the IEPs and some other issues that the district isn't as responsive as they could be, or supportive as they could be. As far as accessibility, I know that we do a great...I think we do a great job. I know there was a girl in my oldest son, Seth, we just wondered in here, when he was in Lincoln, she was in a wheelchair, and Lincoln went and we replaced the mulch with rubber surface, and then she was able to play on the playground with the other children, and it was really great for her. And, you know, she had really helped her feel like more of a part. She was on the sidelines during recess. I do think we need to think, be thoughtful about our LGBTQ, especially our trans students, looking at what happened in Texas with records releases. Who knows what's coming down the pike? I do think we need to be thoughtful about how we keep and maintain records, and how can we protect these kids if something crazy happens at the State House in the future. So just something that has been on my mind, speaking to a couple of parents with trans youth in the Lakewood Schools.
Thank you. The school district has cited declining enrollment due to demographic shifts in the community. How would you approach this if elected? Mrs. Sleif-Rustad, you can go first.
Well, I think we just don't market our district at all. You know, marketing isn't having an Instagram account and sending emails to people on your email list. That's not marketing. And we don't have any sort of comprehensive savvy marketing plan, advertising plan, and these things aren't that expensive. They cost money, but I would venture a guess that they cost significantly less than some of the consulting firms that we hired to try to position a school closure to the community. Currently, only sixty percent of eligible K-12 students in our city are enrolled in our public schools. And from what I understand, it's a ten-year high. To me, that's insane, but it sounds so low. There's...that means that there's a huge opportunity to gain more students for our district. If the problem is enrollment decline, then why aren't we trying to combat it in some way? There seems to be some idea that it's just this inevitability. There's this inevitable, inevitable where enrollment's gonna fall off of a cliff, and that's just not the case. To me, we have to fight for this. I don't think, especially in Lakewood, the birth rate is as important as the rate of households with school-aged children. When my husband and I moved on our block, there were two houses that had kids on our block down by, on Lake. We had kids in our house, and one of our neighbors also had kids in their house. Now there are at least a dozen houses on that block with kids, and they all moved here with those kids when they were small. They came from places like Ohio City or downtown when they realized that they wanted a good... they wanted that urban feel like Cleveland, but they wanted to be able to have a good city, they didn't have to send their kids to private schools. So to me, like, relying solely on the birth rate is off-base.
Thank you. Mrs. Brua?
I agree that there needs to be some marketing. One of the ways that you can do that is that we have First Federal, First Federal Lakewood Stadium, right? Wouldn't it be great that at the bank, they had a showcase of maybe artwork, or pottery, or something that our students produce that you can, like, as a, you know, partnership with that? Or a giant eagle, maybe you don't go to the bank so much, or you drive through and you miss it, right? But, you know, a way to have some kind of partnership with a local organization, because, you know, we wanna promote outside, not just, you know, within our own email address, but outside to the LCA families, and to the families that are driving to private schools or maybe doing homeschools, so they can see a little bit how great our students are. And they are great, and they are wonderful. I know that there are other school districts in other states, Grand Rapids is a good example, that they hired a family liaison, and that person is charged with recruiting families for the district. And, you know, within, if they recruit three families, it pays for that position because they got, you know, twenty thousand dollars follows each student, to get, for an example. Wouldn't it be great if we worked with the city, and the city had a person that we can share, and they were as part of maybe like helping with some customer service and having when people move to the city, a real estate agent can say, hey, call up Mrs. Smith, and Mrs. Smith will help you get situated with, you know, whatever you need in your new house, and you can talk to you about the schools, and so some type of, you know, resource there. So I thought about that as well. So I've thought about that as well. I think that, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do, um, but I don't think we've done any of them. And I think if you start doing that, it can have a positive result on our enrollment.
Thank you. How do you see the role of a school board member compared to that of a superintendent? Mrs. Barrow, you can start.
So, you know, if you look in the Ohio School Board Association, it talks about how, um, the superintendent acts on behalf of the board. And then the board member does not have any power except for the five of them when they're together in that meeting. And, um, the role of the board is to hire and evaluate and fire the superintendent and to hire and evaluate and fire the treasurer. And then to act on policies that the superintendent, um, said that they kind of manage the day-to-day. And so, you know, that's in theory, you know, how, what it should be. Um, but, you know, there's, those members and the superintendent are faces of the community and they are part of, uh, who we are and they really need to represent us. And, you know, being involved and, and being in the community are really important. And I think that the superintendent, um, should also be, to Mrs. O'Toole's point, uh, should be from the community. Because, you know, that is a great way. So if you have a disagreement with somebody and you see them at Giant Eagle or you see them at a football game, you can say, hey, I, you know, what's going on with that, you know, STEM cycle, that STEM, that STEM class or something like that? So what's going on with this? And it can be resolved face-to-face, um, instead of having to bring it up at a board meeting or having to make an appointment at somebody's office to talk about that. So I think that is a, an important piece to have, um, somebody who, um, uh, as a board member, you know, represent the district and to, to be a part of, uh, part of the community.
Thank you. Mrs. Slipreston?
So the, uh, boards, the policy book calls the superintendent the chief executive officer of the schools, the, the CEO. And that's speaking my language, right? Um, so if the CEO is the superintendent, then the board is the board of directors. The board needs to hold the superintendent accountable. Um, I get that the, the board doesn't, isn't out doing the hard work that superintendent is doing, but to Monica's point, we need someone who's entrenched in this community, who is part of the fabric. And that's why the policy manual requires that they live in this city. It, it feels very disjointed to have, uh, it's like you have a CEO of a company that like flies in once a month and then flies out and is gone. And the company's just run itself. Um, or maybe the CEO doesn't really understand the vision and the culture of the organization and takes it on a path that is maybe wrong for the organization. So to me, the big, most important thing is for a board is to, to hold that CEO accountable. Uh, hold the superintendent accountable, right? Um, and I think that's kind of lacking in our, in our current situation.
Thank you. So we've talked a little bit about the levy, so I wanted to pivot to that. With the school district's plan to ask Lakewood voters to approve a school levy in May twenty twenty-six, do you feel it's important to work to build public trust? And if so, how would you work to promote that community support? Mrs. Slipreston, you can go first.
Well, as I said, I think we need to close the book on this consolidation. We need to close the book on, we built Grant, it's here, move forward. Like, let's, let's just move past that. Um, and I think we need to launch a new task force to develop a strategic plan. But I would advocate for creating an application system with specific qualifications for what you're looking for and how we build the strategic plan. If you're going to have a task force, it shouldn't be handpicked because you think these people are probably going to go along with whatever you say. Um, oh, here's some PTA presence, they'll probably trust me and go along with what I say. Or these are some people from the community that I think will align with me. You need to have specific requirements for what are the skills that you want in this task force? And then to take it a step further, those meetings should be happening during board meetings. You kick off a board meeting and then the task force convenes and everyone can see what they're doing and listen and hear. And there's complete transparency. And then you can't accuse, um, anyone of any sort of nefarious intentions because everything's open to the public. Everyone can see it. Everyone can give feedback in the public commons if they wish. Um, but it's just a community, it's participation and it's out in the open. So I think that being more transparent, being more intentional and involving the community more is, uh, really important to build that trust there.
Thank you. Mrs. Barrow?
Yeah, I agree that it is important to, um, to build public, public trust. And if you were at the meeting on Monday, you would see and have heard how the community really responded. They really, um, had an opportunity to, um, to share that information. And I think, you know, the, the way I do things as an education planner, we have like three pillars of how we, um, lead meetings. And one is, uh, there's no predetermined outcomes. The second is it's community-driven, so everybody needs to have a voice. And once, you know, again, people have a voices are heard and feel, um, that you start to get their support. And then third, it needs to be transparent and accurate. So again, sharing all that information, um, sharing and linking documents, uh, that kind of stuff and accurate information as well. So that, those are some of the ways that we, we would go about building that community support. And I will tell you though, that I had worked with the school district and I was telling somebody a little bit earlier that went through the facility, um, task force, they had two meetings and then they had a community meeting in between. And by the time we got to that second meeting, that task force said, we, we've got to stop. There's no way we're going to get the community to, to buy in. We know our neighbors. We, we, we spent money twenty years ago on these buildings. There's no way they're going to close these schools to, and, and build a new one or, or add on to make it a K-12. And, you know, we were like, wow, we've never had this happen before. So we kind of backed away and a couple, um, months later, we found out the superintendent left. Uh, then new superintendent asked us for information and we shared it with them. Well, they went on the ballot without any further planning and they failed miserably for the building project. And then they went out a second time, failed, and then a third time. They have since gotten a different architect firm to help them. So that, it was successful in that they knew their community and had our task force done that and not, and stopped last year, we wouldn't be here right now. I'd be at home with my kids.
Thank you. Pivoting a bit, how would you handle being in the minority on a school board decision? What is your approach to collaboration and dissent with your colleagues? Mrs. Barrow?
Well, certainly, um, anytime you're in a minority, you, you, or anytime you're in a, a discussion, you really want to understand where, um, people are coming from and putting yourself in their shoes, uh, being respectful. Um, you know, it can get a little heated if you're coming in going, oh, this is the answer and here's, this is my position. But if you are closed-minded, uh, you're not going to be successful in getting your way and it's not going to be a successful process. So you really need to be, uh, open-minded, but also, uh, when you believe something is right, to stand your ground and say publicly, this is my position. This is why I don't believe this and this is why I'm voting a certain way. So I am not afraid to be in that, uh, position, uh, in the minority. Um, I would always keep any decision that I, uh, made, uh, with the students at the, at the top of mind and, and, you know, what is the best interest for the students in the district? It's not a, a yes person. It's, uh, what you're looking for, you're looking for someone that's going to find, um, so, solutions and some real, um, you know, hold the district to be accountable.
Thank you. Mrs. Slipreston?
Yeah, I think that it kind of starts back to the whole strategic plan. If we have a strategic plan that's been developed by the community and we can all agree on the facts, right? Like we have accurate data that is completely, not biased, it's not cherry picked, it's broadly painting the picture of the, the full situation that we're considering. It is not hard to disagree. When you can agree on the facts and you can agree on the goal, the end goal, there can be a lot of different ways to get there. Um, so being in a minority in that situation, it's, it's not as hard. It's a lot easier to come together and find common ground. Um, but I agree with Monica, you know, respectfully disagreeing and just publicly stating that I disagree. I have no, no qualms about doing that. Um, I think we need more of that, quite frankly.
Thank you. How would you support teacher recruitment, retention and morale in our schools? Mrs. Slipreston?
So as far as I know, there doesn't appear to be a current problem with recruitment and retention, considering most of the teachers at Lincoln have been there for multiple decades. My sons, both of my son's first grade teacher taught with teaching when I was in school and their fourth grade teacher just retired and she had my brother at Roosevelt in nineteen ninety-two. Um, so I, I am concerned about morale, teacher morale. Um, I, the current, uh, teachers', uh, collective bargaining agreement prevents teachers from publicly disagreeing with the board and the board also from, or not the board, the district, the district also can't publicly disagree with the teachers. And in a situation like this, I've had many private conversations with teachers that I have close friends with who are not comfortable publicly stating that they, they don't agree with what's happening because they're afraid for their jobs. Um, and I don't know if that's kind of par for the course. It seems a bit unusual that a collective bargaining agreement was, would kind of shackle, um, your, your First Amendment rights in that way. But, um, to me, that, that's a problem. And, and even if it's not the collective bargaining agreement, there appears to be a culture of not wanting to speak up and not wanting to rock the vote. Because even if the teachers can't legally speak out publicly, the fact that they don't feel like they can say it to their own leadership is highly problematic to me. As a, as a leader of, of people, I have an open door policy and I want to hear when people disagree with me. Because if you disagree with me, it should either sharpen my point of view to, to help me poke holes in my own story or it should make me pause and think, am I really doing the right thing? And if you're shutting off that information, that's, uh, toxic to me. It's a toxic work culture.
Thank you. Mrs. Barrow?
Well, I think their recruitment, retention, morale are all, um, connected. And we really want to make sure that we give our teachers the, uh, support, uh, materials, you know, within, inside the buildings that, that they can to be successful. I have heard though, from, um, different folks at block parties that they are finding to be a little stifled by administration and, um, they would have ideas, um, you know, math change and somebody brought in some different math curriculum and they weren't asked and they're the math teacher and they weren't very pleased with that. And so I, 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 I do find that that is a problem that we're facing right now. Um, if you, you know, whether you know that or not. Um, I think, you know, I don't know if there's a way to make our superintendent, um, a goal to, as far as retention, you know, and, I, I, maybe it tied to her. I, I'm not sure, we'd have to work through that. Um, I think it's important too, and I, I, um, have seen other school board members attend some of those, um, I was at a music class at Grant, my, uh, daughter is in music and, you know, the parents come and I know as a board member, I'd like to go and see and check out what's going on and, and be, um, be present there and approachable and, and learn and, and show appreciation for the teachers. You know, they're, they are doing hard work and they need to be appreciated and supported. So, um, I think that that is, is important to, um, to make sure that we have that.
Thank you. What is your vision for Lakewood City Schools over the next five to ten years? And how will you measure your success as a school board member against if elected? Mrs. Barrow?
Well, in five to ten years, our school is going to be a destination school district and we're going to have lots of families coming here. They want to choose our school district. Um, first, they want to come and meet teachers at our school district. Um, they're going to stay there forever in Lincoln in fourth grade and first grade and teach your grandkids, right? Um, we're, you know, we want to prepare the students for whatever path, you know, is next, right? College, military, career, um, community life. Um, we're going to have a great athletic team and we're going to have seven elementary schools. That would be my vision, um, for the next five to ten years. And so our, having successful partnerships with, um, you know, companies in the, in the district, real estate agents, how we can help market. We also, you know, you mentioned about measuring, you know, um, you know, our, looking at staff numbers and retention, um, graduates, you know, successful in their endeavors, not tying, you know, graduate, graduation rates, but we want to make sure everyone's successful. Um, and then I think we need to have some kind of, um, you know, maybe they're like semi-annual huddles, I mentioned the community conversations. But I think having those, um, where we're able to hear from our, our community and make sure that, you know, get the pulse of what's going on so that if we need to pivot, we can pivot before it gets to be a fourteen-month-long process.
Thank you. Mrs. Slipreston?
I, I just see the attacks coming from the state and the federal government, um, trying to basically dismantle public education. Um, they're, they're not at our doorstep yet, right? Like we really, uh, dodged a bullet with that state levy. And, uh, to me, this is the time where we need to stop and look at who, who do we want to be, as I said, like, uh, elite public education institution and the model walking district for the nation? And how do we achieve that given these headwinds? And we need a strong strategic plan. We need to define success, what it looks like for us and start talking annually about how we're going to get there. Um, that's the only way that we're going to be able to remain strong and resilient in the face of these threats. Um, and again, through, just through having a really strong OGSM and knowing where we're going and, um, and having a plan. And then annually, that's, I, I, I think it's interesting that it's like a three-year strategic plan. Things are changing rapidly. We need to be looking at this every single year. You can't just put a plan in place and then let it, it ride for years at a time. Your objective's not going to change over time materially, right? Like your objective is still going to stay the same. But your, your goals and your strategies can pivot in, in response to some of these, uh, headwinds that we're facing. So to me, my vision is that we all have a strong strategic plan and a transparent and, and healthy relationship with the community, um, to continue, uh, our success in the future.
Thank you. And thank you both for answering all of our questions. I wanted to give you both a little old time, just in case there was anything that you wanted to state that we didn't get to this evening. Uh, so Mrs. Barrow, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, yes, thank you for, uh, coming here tonight and for this opportunity. Um, I am a proud, a lifelong Lakewood resident and a graduate and parent of three that are in our schools. Uh, my personal and professional and volunteer experiences have prepared me to serve in the Board of Education with dedication and purpose. And I would love to have that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Slipreston, anything to add on your?
I once again did not prepare. Uh, so I went short.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I think that before this whole, um, task force thing started, I felt, our schools are great. We have an awesome system. I believe in it. Um, I, my kids are having an amazing experience. There's always room for improvement, but we have something really special and precious. And our community has made these generational investments in these buildings. And I think we owe it to the community to see them through, um, and do everything we can to protect this. This is a very special way of life. There, most of my team, uh, is remote. They aren't in the Cleveland area. So I have sales reps in Boston and, um, in, in Oregon and LA. And, um, when I've told them that, oh, my kids just walked to school around the corner and it's a public school, they're like blown away. This is not common. Um, there are parts of the country where people don't even consider sending their kids to public schools. And most parts of the country where there are great public schools are getting bust. So what we have is so precious. And I understand that there could be down the road, uh, circumstances where it may be necessary to reduce the elementary schools. But I think that is a very high bar. We are not there and we're not showing the community that we're doing everything we can to avoid it. And that's what I hope for the, for this district, that we can come together and fight for this and, and protect it.
Thank you so much. Thank you to both of you for being here and thank you to everyone for being here to hear this important conversation. If you have additional questions, the candidates will be sticking around a little bit afterwards. You can meet with them individually. Also, make sure to check out the tables in the back for voting information, information from the candidates, yard signs you can grab, um, at Reserve Lakewood Schools, information. We appreciate you being here tonight and hope everyone has a great evening. Thank you.